Well, everybody, we want to welcome you to District 5 Transportation Town Hall Meeting, and it is now my pleasure to introduce your Orange County Mayor, Jerry L. Demmings.
All right. Good evening to all of you. Let me welcome you here to this Town Hall meeting. The goal tonight is to share some information with you about transportation solutions for our community. I'm joined by the County Commissioner for this district, Commissioner Emily Banier. Would you just stand and be recognized at this time? We also have several other elected officials here. I'll begin with the Mayor of the City of Winter Park, Mr. Steve Leary. Would you stand to be recognized? And then the Mayor of Maitland, Mayor McDonald, would you stand to be recognized? Ah, he is standing! And then we have Councilman from the City of Winter Park, Mr. Todd Weaver. Would you stand to be recognized if you are not already standing as well? All right. So I believe that's all of our elected officials who are here in the room. I brought backup with me, though, tonight. We have a number of county staffers who are here, deputy county administrators and others, who are here to help us respond to the various questions that you may have about the initiative going forward. What I want to do in the very beginning is just share with you a little bit about my vision for this transportation tax and potentially what it can mean for our community. There will be a PowerPoint presentation where we'll go back and we will reinforce some of the information that I'm going to share in just a few moments and then provide additional information. How many of you in this room believe that we have a problem with traffic congestion in our community? Would you raise your hands? It looks like the majority of the people here. How many of you want us to do something about it? Raise your hands. Okay, there you go. So you want us to do something about it. During the course of running to be the Mayor of Orange County from July of 2017 until when I was elected about a year ago, August 28, 2018, I went to some 1,000-plus community meetings, forums, debates, and other meetings with different constituents across our county. What I would tell you is that the overwhelming majority of them, when they said, "What are the priorities that they wanted me to tackle as Mayor?", always one of the top priorities was to deal with the transportation and the traffic issues that we have as a community. Now, the good news is that we are a growing community. I believe that the day that our quality of life in an area where we can take care of our families, as such, in a growing community that grows by a net of nearly 1,000 new people each week, that's significant. In a state where we grow by nearly 1,000 new people each day, in a community where 75 million visitors come to visit us on an annual basis, that means effectively that our population here in Orange County that we have to provide services to on a daily basis, it doubles. On a weekly basis, it doubles. And so in order to be transformational, in order to really create the kind of connectivity in a mass transit system that the people in this community are saying to me that they really want to see, we need not tens of millions of dollars, but we need billions of dollars in order to be able to accomplish that goal. When you think about world-class communities, the City of London, New York, or other places like that around the globe, every one of them has many things in common, but one of the things that they do have is a robust mass transit system. You would likely agree with me that we don't have that in this community. But we do want to make certain that Orange County grows in a very responsible way. The law here in Florida allows us to put forth a traffic, as a charter county, Orange County is a charter county, and it allows us to put forward a traffic or transportation surcharge sales tax on the ballot as a charter county. A 1% or a 1 cent sales tax in this community has the potential to bring in, on an annual basis, revenue of approximately $600 million. We had numbers, new numbers this week that came in from the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, and those numbers indicated that a conservative estimate is that it would bring in $596, like $4 million on an annual basis. The reality of that is that over a period of time, if that's 10 years, 20 years, it would bring in billions of dollars. In order to get us to that transformational point, this is the only funding methodology that can get us there. Yes, Orange County has a significant budget. We just started our new fiscal year, and our budget is about $4.7 billion. But I can tell you that much of that budget is restricted in ways that we could spend the dollars. We don't have the capacity to be able to cut, and as a local government, I can tell you, every day, we task our staff with looking for inefficiency and taking the dollars, the inefficient dollars, and turning them into efficient use of those same dollars. But even if we did all of that, on an annual basis, it wouldn't produce the kind of dollars that I just shared with you. I want to tell you just how significant this is. If you were a college student today and you were about to graduate from the University of Central Florida with a degree in engineering, or planning, or architecture, or construction management, et cetera, if this tax passes, those individuals would likely spend the remainder of their work life working on projects associated with the expenditure of funds generated by this tax. We could raise property taxes. I'm not an advocate for raising abhorrent taxes because even if we raised property taxes by a full mill, that would bring in, on an annual basis, about $144 million. A half-mill, $72 million. What did I tell you that this sales tax would bring in? It was just a few moments ago, I told you, so hopefully your memories are long enough to know remember what I said it would bring in. And here's the good news. If we raised taxes, property taxes, who we would leave out of the mix of paying for those taxes are the people who are visiting us, who are really helping to clog up the roadways. The beauty of the sales tax initiative, over 51% of the revenues generated from the sales tax will be paid by people who don't live here, the visitors who are coming to town, who are using our roadways, et cetera. The other thing that we're looking to do as a county, the reason why we're having these Town Hall meetings, before we will tell you what we're going to spend the money on, we want you to tell us what you want the money spent on. So this meeting tonight is as much about listening as anything else. You will have the opportunity to participate in taking surveys, giving us feedback. What we will do with that information is create a project list. Now, the reason why you have mayors and commissioners from our municipalities here tonight is we have decided that it is better for the entire, there are some major expenditures that we'd have to take off the top because in May of 2021, the current Sun Rail is due to transition from operation by the state to local operation. You're going to hear some more about that tonight. So we have our challenges. What I'm asking you to do tonight is to be open-minded. Allow us the opportunity in the next few months to listen to you, to create a plan of action, and then we will share that plan with you so that when you go to vote in November of 2020, you'll know precisely what it is that you're voting for. That's the fairest way to do it. Rather than us come from the top down, we're using a grassroots approach. We're talking to you, our citizens. So at this time, I think the next person that is coming up is going to be Ms. Jane, well, let's see. We're going to have some presentations first, and then Jane Wartrill. Jane will be moderating when we get to the Q&amp;A portion, and hopefully we'll get to that sooner than later. But I'm going to introduce Ms. Carla Bill Johnson to come up now, and she's going to share some additional information with you from the PowerPoint presentation. Our goal is to kind of frame the issue and the possibilities of what we can do with this sales tax. Before we do that, that's right, I do have Commissioner Banier. Commissioner, you want to come up and greet the people, and then we'll go to Carla. All right, Commissioner Banier, give her a hand, please. All right.
Well, I'm excited to have everyone here, and so many people interested in this topic of transportation, and it really is an important topic. And you know what? Ice it in traffic, too. So I'm right there with you. But I'm here to learn what the mayor's initiative is and to hear what he has to say and to hear also what you have to say. So again, thank you for being here. Please participate and share your information with us. Thank you.
All right. All right, now, Ms. Carla Bill Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, and it is my pleasure to spend a few minutes here just providing some educational information to frame our conversation for this afternoon. Just to give you a broad perspective of Orange County, our community, we have a population of about 1.3 million residents. Our community is 90% urban and approximately 10% rural. We have the fifth-largest population in the state of Florida of all of the 67 counties. Our land area is nearly 1,000 square miles with 13 municipalities that we have the pleasure to coordinate with on a number of topics. And our residents living and working in Orange County represent about 87%, which means as we talk about transportation, it's important that we plan for how our residents commute to and from work. So I just want to answer some basic questions here. How is transportation currently funded is something I want to answer very briefly here. There are essentially five primary transportation funding sources that we rely on today. Historically, transportation funding sources have been gas taxes and impact fees. Gas taxes, of course, consist of the fuel tax that we pay each time we gas up our vehicles. Impact fees are the fees that developers pay to help mitigate the impacts that their new development creates. And then there are a few restricted resources, such as community redevelopment areas and other trust funds that have been established with very specific limitations on how those dollars are spent. More recently, because of limitations with the traditional transportation funding sources not being sufficient to meet our transportation needs, we have increasingly relied upon property taxes and sales taxes. Property taxes, of course, are the taxes paid on property owned within the county, and then sales taxes are those taxes that we pay on certain goods and services that we use. And so looking at those existing transportation funding sources, how do we use those funds? When we talk about transportation in the county, there are some just broad areas that I want to focus on here. Obviously, one of the first things we traditionally think about are our roadways. We also have to maintain those roadways, and that's where obviously resurfacing comes in. I'm going to talk a little bit about traffic signals, intersection improvements, and some of the technology that go along with that. Obviously, bicycle and pedestrian safety is a critical component of our transportation system. We hear a lot about the need for street lighting for safety reasons. And then mass transit, as the mayor spoke of earlier, is a very important component of our transportation system. So when we look at our roadways, there are 2,700, 2,700 miles of county roadways within the county. And just to kind of give you an order of magnitude, understanding of what it takes to improve those roadways, the average cost to widen a roadway is about $3 million per lane mile. So if, for example, we're widening a roadway from two to four lanes, that roadway would cost approximately $12 million to get one mile of roadway in place. Just looking at how the roadways throughout the county operate, approximately 1 in 4 of our roadways is failing, which means that it's carrying more traffic than it was designed to carry, or more traffic than it has the capacity to handle. I do want to point out here that when we're looking at major highways like Interstate 4 and some of our toll roads that the Central Florida Expressway Authority is responsible for, that's not the focus or the topic of conversation for this evening, and we really are focused on more of our surface roadway network, as I-4 is obviously well under construction, as we all know, and the toll road system has a separate funding source. So obviously, when we choose to invest in our infrastructure, what's equally important is being able to maintain those roadways and that infrastructure. The most visible representation of roadway maintenance is the resurfacing of the pavement that comprises the roadways. We currently resurface our roadways every 12 to 15 years in the county at a cost of about $175,000 per mile. Last year, the county was able to resurface about 185 miles of roadway, but to keep up with the average lifespan of a roadway and to avoid the higher costs associated with having to reconstruct pavement that has completely deteriorated or degraded, we really should be resurfacing them approximately every 10 years. So ideally, we would be resurfacing about 270 miles each year. Let's talk a little bit about traffic signals and the intersection improvements, also a key component of our transportation system. Sometimes the congestion we experience in traffic is not just the roadway itself, but it's the intersections along the roadway. The more efficient our traffic signals are and the intersections are, the less delay we experience in traffic. Right now, there are 585 existing traffic signals within Orange County. The average cost of a new traffic signal is $350,000. And in order for the traffic signal systems to function properly and communicate, fiber-optic cable is a critical piece of the infrastructure that must exist and be maintained. That fiber allows us to communicate with the traffic signals and the traffic signals to communicate with each other so that they're coordinated, and ideally, you and I are the people who arrive at the signal and it turns green. There are 240 miles of fiber-optic cable in place within the county, and this past year, we were able to budget approximately 15 intersection improvements. And those are things like adding turn lanes to intersections and installing the signals themselves. Now let's switch gears and talk about bicycle and pedestrian safety. These are also very critical components. We have a dubious distinction of being very dangerous from a pedestrian safety perspective within our community, and we are working hard to respond to that. Sidewalks cost approximately $264,000 per mile to install, and last year, we were able to install eight new miles of sidewalks. We also have an important priority placed on incorporating bicycle facilities such as bike lanes and multipurpose paths within our roadway corridors as we are designing them going forward to provide better and safer accommodations for bicyclists. And in response to these challenges, we've got a bicycle and pedestrian safety action plan with some recommendations that go along with that. As it relates to safety also, streetlights are a key component of our transportation system. We're currently on the end of a five-year program to install street lighting along some of our major roadways. At the conclusion of that program, 85 miles of roadway will have been lit. However, we know already that there are more than 190 more miles of unlit major roadways within Orange County. And there are additional roadway lighting needs at intersections and crosswalks specifically focused on pedestrian safety and making sure pedestrians can be seen at night when they're crossing our roadways. Our transportation system is what we call multimodal, and that means there are a lot of different ways we need to be able to move around and connect within our community. Mass transit is one of those key modes of transportation. The county currently funds Links, the bus system, utilizing property taxes. Approximately $55 million in county funding is budgeted to support Links in this new fiscal year that the mayor referenced. Sun Rail is also one of our existing mass transit modes within our region. And as the mayor mentioned, the Florida Department of Transportation currently funds Sun Rail operations, but this responsibility is scheduled to transfer to us as local governments in the next couple of years and will require an ongoing funding commitment from the county for continued operations of Sun Rail. There have also been a number of additional mass transit options throughout the county that have been studied over the years, such as additional rail connections, bus rapid transit systems. Bus rapid transit is really a more sophisticated type of bus operation that relies on technology to let you know where and when the bus will arrive, that takes that experience to another level. And we also have had a challenge with being able to move those studies into some form of implementation because of funding constraints. So as I close on the topic of mass transit, I'm going to ask Ms. Tiffany Hamler-Hawkins, who is the Chief Administrative Officer of Links, to come spend some time delving further into the transit discussion.
Thank you, Carla, and I want to say thank you to the mayor and Commissioner Banier for having us here tonight. Just wanted to talk a little bit about Links tonight and give you a little bit of information. First and foremost, our guiding principles and our goals are we're focused on reliability, safety, and customer service in our region. So a couple of fast facts about Links. We do serve a tri-county area, Orange, Osceola, and Seminole County. The property size or the square miles is 2,500 square miles with a population of over 2 million. And we do that with about 70 bus routes with just a little over 300 buses. We also have implemented in the last 10 years some NeighborLink routes, which are our more flexible service. I'll talk about that in just a little bit. We do provide about 25 million trips a year. Just a little bit going to the funding, like most agencies, we have an operating and a capital budget. Over half of our operating revenue comes from the locals, such as Orange, Seminole, and Osceola, and the majority of that local funding does come from Orange County. Another 17% comes from customer fares, and that's about the national average, anywhere from 15% to 25% is where the typical across the nation on the customer fares. About 22% comes from state and federal sources for our operating, and those are fairly flat revenue streams lately. And then very minimal in contract services and advertising. I think you've all seen our advertising on our bus, and we do try to maximize that. Just a quick note about our capital budget, over 98% of our capital budget comes from federal and state sources. So of course, our primary mission is our regular buses that you see every day, which includes those 300 buses that I mentioned. And these are our regular 40-foot buses. We also have the 60-foot articulated or the accordion or slinky bus that you see around. And we're very proud of the service. But we also have a family of services that you may not be as familiar with. We have our limo service, our orange grapefruit and lime lines downtown Orlando for our bus circulator. The NeighborLink services that I talked about, those serve a geographical area that may not be ready for regular bus service with those 40- or 60-foot buses. So we serve a geographic area. We have a very successful van pull program. We have over 200 vans in the three-county region. We also provide the Road Ranger service for those areas on I-4, not under the I-4 ultimate construction. And then lastly, we have our Access Links paratransit service, and that's the service for the most needy and disadvantaged in our community that can't access the regular buses. And speaking of bus stops, we have about 4,300 bus stops system-wide, and about 25% of those do have shelters. And the majority of those stops are in Orange County. Just a little bit about who takes those 25 million trips on Links, and I won't go through each of these, but just to highlight, the majority of our riders, 60%, are employed full-time primarily in the service industry. And half of those trips, it takes two or more buses to complete that trip, making a transfer. And this is one of the most common issues that we hear about when we're out in the community is how many transfers it takes, how many buses it takes to complete a trip. Another common issue that we hear frequently when we talk about the bus service is our frequency, which is the time in between buses. In fact, almost 50% of our bus routes are on 60-minute frequency or more, and of those 70-plus routes that we have, just 7%, which is five routes, are 15 minutes or less. One of the reasons that we see the long wait time is our population has grown. I think we're all seeing it, as Mayor Demmings referred, we're one of the fastest-growing regions in the nation. Links' transit fleet has not kept up with that growth. You see the growth in the last nine years, 23% in population. Our bus fleet has grown 5%. And our buses have gotten older as we've gone through. The FTA guidelines for retirement is 12 years or 500,000 miles. With the size of our region, we put miles on those buses faster than most transit agencies. And so right now, we have about 41% of our buses are over 500,000-mile threshold. Just real quick, I want to talk about Sun Rail. Carla mentioned that. The region's commuter rail system, it not only serves the Link service area of Orange, Seminole, and Osceola, but there's one station in Volusia as well. But 16 total stations serving those counties. And as they talked about, it's weekday-only service, so it is that commuter service serving that typical Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 jobs, but we do have a very much of a service industry. And in the off-peak times, it runs 90 to 120 minutes, and again, no weekend or holiday service. So let me wrap up the discussion with how Central Florida compares in its transit funding, both Links and Sun Rail, with similar transit agencies across Florida and the country. This chart shows you in This chart shows you, in the first column, after the transit name, the Lynx pink, if you will, it's the investment per person or per capita. And Central Florida falls at the bottom of those that are compared to on this chart at $71 per person. And you see that similar square miles, King County and Seattle, you know, I believe they're spending about $300, over $300 per person. So, just a little bit of information about Lynx. Hopefully, I encapsulated that. And so, with that, I'll close my remarks and turn it back over to Mayor Demings. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tiffany. So, you saw the framework that we've kind of laid out. Now, I kind of want you to put on your dreaming hat, if you will. Could you imagine Sun Rail having stations that were in east Orange County? Where you can get on Sun Rail and go east? Or stationed in west Orange County? You could go between east and west on Sun Rail? Or a Lynx bus system that could be twice the size, with twice the number of routes, with more contemporary-style buses, perhaps with dedicated bus lanes, bus rapid transit lanes, that can connect the University of Central Florida to downtown Orlando, where students can go back and forth? Perhaps where there's a use of technology, where we could maybe in our tourism corridor use autonomous buses or vehicles to transport people around? Or connect workers who work in south Orange County to downtown, to the airport, or to the tourism corridor? Where we could increase the number of pedestrian safety features that they talked about here? The goal is not to supplant. Those funding sources that we currently have that have restricted or dedicated resurfacing projects or roadway improvement projects, we will continue with those. But in order to get us to the next level, to add to what we're doing, that requires a significant investment by this entire community. There could be entrepreneurial opportunities here. People can create businesses associated with it. Where these potential spurs or spokes that could go off of Sun Rail could end up in places where there are centers of commerce, where that could be development opportunities. We could reduce the cost of transportation for the average person here in our county that would allow them to have more discretionary income for housing, for food, for healthcare, for investment in their higher education, or their job skills development. So, it can be an exponential economic impact on our community. What we're going to do now is to get into a bit of a dialogue. We're going to turn it over to Ms. Jane Wartrell to moderate, take questions from you. We're going to answer those questions. So, there are microphones that will be throughout the room, and if I don't have the answer, we have a very bright staff, very experienced, that will be able to help answer those questions for you. Okay, we'll turn it over to Ms. Wartrell.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Demings. Okay. So, just want to go over a couple of things, and we'll hear from you shortly. It's your chance to tell us about the state of transportation in Orange County. Specifically, this is a huge district, from College Park all the way to Christmas. And we hope that UCF students are here and all kinds of people are here that'll talk to us. So, what this meeting is about is your ideas on specific transportation solutions to improve our community. What this meeting is not about, as the mayor has emphasized time and time again, is to hear solutions from Orange County staff about a specific transportation plan. We want your input to help formulate a plan, because there is no plan without your help. Just a couple of ground rules. Jeff Williamson, if you'll stand up, please. Raise your hand. There's Jeff. Okay, the trumpet sounded. If you want to comment, you're going to line up by Jeff. Please share your solutions in a constructive manner, no more than three minutes tops. And please be brief, because we want to hear from as many people as possible tonight. If you require more details, our experts are here. Our staff is sitting right up here. We've got Lynx people, Sun Rail. You can go out in the hallway, you can talk in the back, and we can give you more solutions. And remember, this is a live broadcast, and we know you're passionate about transportation, or you wouldn't be here. But please remember, this is a family show, as you give us your valuable input. Now, we've divided all your comments. If you look along the wall here, you're going to see six areas, six easels, and we're going to be writing down your ideas. Also, we have these comment cards that we're going to try to get to. If we don't get to all of them, they're going to be turned in, and they're going to be written down on all those easels. So, we've divided it into public transportation, pedestrian and bike safety, roads, technology, traffic signals, and streetlights, intersections, and others. Now, you took a survey when you first came in, and we'll be reading these comments. But if you are at home and you're watching this, and you want to take the survey, and we believe maybe 700, 800 people, maybe 1,000 people, about 1,000 people have filled out surveys already. We're really happy about that. You can go to our website at www.ocfl.net/itsbackslashtransportation. Also, we are on Twitter tonight, and our hashtag is #OCFLTransportation, if you want to reach us that way. So, I'm going to read a comment card, and it's going to go to what Mayor Demings talked about. It's from Lisa. She says, "Please, fix our bus system. Please give the east side access to Sun Rail." And I think, Mayor, that's exactly what you talked about.
Just as a comment on that, in order to build a leg or a spoke or spur that will come off the main Sun Rail line, it could cost anywhere between $200 to $400 million for each one of them. And so, if we go east, we go west, we connect, it could be costly. But this is the type of thing that we would likely be able to do if this sales tax passes.
Okay. Thank you. Another one, Jenna, tells us, "What do we have to do to get streetlights on McCullough Road, specifically between Lockwood and Alafeya? Do we have someone here that can talk about that?" We know you can call 311, but any of our experts? All right, we're going to take this comment, and we will put it in, you know, we're going to put it down, and we're going to look for solutions.
Well, we have one.
Oh, wait, we do have someone. Okay. Introduce yourself, please.
So, I'm Renzo, the Transportation Planning Manager with Orange County. Orange County does have a lighting program. However, as you may know, our funding for that specific program is fairly limited. So, we're only able to light fairly short segments of the roadway. I believe the total cost, they have a program, is somewhere around $1 million or so. But as Mayor indicated earlier, our needs are much greater than that. So, for McCullough specifically, I would suggest that you send us an email and see if that project is in our current program. And if not, that is certainly something that we would be looking to add.
Okay. So, as Jeff will go around and start to get comments, I just want to see a show of hands. There's someone right there, Jeff?
There's someone here, I think.
Oh, he's right here?
Are you in line, sir?
If you want to just come around.
Come, form a line right here, if you don't mind. Come around and form a line here. Come on up, sir.
How many of people in our audience have been here for 20 years or more? Can I see a show of hands? All right. All right. 30 years? Oh, man, you guys have seen some real growth, haven't you? Wow. Any UCF students here? Awesome. Awesome. You're the future. This is for you. Let's see. How about anybody who used Lynx or Sun Rail? Do you want to raise your hand? You do. Okay, a couple. But who uses their car or their SUV or whatever as a primary source of transportation? Okay, thank you. That gives us a good idea of what we're facing. Okay?
All right, we have a comment here from, again, sir?
Frank.
Comment from Frank.
Okay, Frank.
I work at UCF, and quite frequently when I'm coming out, the people on Alafeya Trail get backed up behind a light, and they block University Boulevard. So, we're sitting there with a green light, and we can't go anywhere. And so, sometimes people will try to weave through and create dangerous situations. And it seems like there must be some way of getting sensors set up so that this doesn't happen. This isn't the only place I've seen this. I've also seen it at Ranger in Aloma, where Ranger gets blocked. So, it seems like so many of our backups go several lights, and then people are always trying to get in before the light changes, and so they're blocking the cross street.
So, Frank, if we're hearing you correctly, you have an issue with the way the lights are running, and you'd like to see sensors in there? And some sort of solution to stop the congestion in the Alafeya area?
Yeah, to perhaps sense when too many cars are backed up and therefore turn, change the light so that, in this case, Alafeya would stop. And when the light changes, so the other side can go.
I think we have a subject matter expert to give us an answer on that.
Yeah, we do. We have someone that's going to talk to you about this.
Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Kristi Lothe. I'm the manager of the Traffic Engineering Division. So, the comment that you're talking about is actually not very unusual. There's just so much congestion. And we do time our corridors. About every three years, we do re-timing along our corridors, and we do have detection at that intersection. So, what we can do, anytime you have issues with traffic signal timing, we have a traffic management center. You can call 311 at any time, and we're taking notes today, of course, about your comment. But we send technicians out to kind of tweak the timing based on real-time conditions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Frank, very much for your comment. We appreciate it. Thank you. The gentleman next, can you take a look behind you and see how many people are behind you? So, please, there's loads of people that want to talk. Keep it brief and give us your solution, please.
This is Joseph, Jane.
Hey, Joseph.
Yes, I've lived in Orange County for several years, and I only live six minutes away. I've noticed over the years that the roads have been getting worse. And with me trying to buy a house in Orange County, I've noticed that it's getting harder, especially when I don't agree with the tax rate that's being implemented. With the roads getting worse, you want to give someone else a tax break for their roads. How is building roads for Universal going to improve the roads where I pay taxes here in this part of the county?
Well, we appreciate that comment, but it's not really why we're here tonight. But we will briefly answer your comment, and then we hope that there's a subject matter expert here that can talk about that. And then, if you want to step out in the hallway and talk to him.
Yes.
But we're here to get your, do you have a solution?
So, I'll give a brief answer specific to the Universal issue, and a short answer. But if you want the details, I'll be happy to walk out and discuss it with you. But basically, you saw Ms. Carla Bell Johnson earlier talk about restricted funds. So, that roadway is within the I Drive Community Redevelopment Area. Those dollars can only be spent there for specific transportation projects. They cannot be spent over in east Orange County, for example, or for transit or any other transportation project. That particular improvement was initially identified over 20 years ago, and it also is tied to several agreements. But in regards, if you want to know specific funding scenarios and how that's going to work, I'll be glad to walk out and give you the details.
Thank you, Joseph.
But again, the important thing is those funds are restricted for that area.
And Renzo, you might want to talk a little bit about who benefits from the roadway there.
Sure. So, of course, that roadway is not a Universal roadway. Universal is partnering with Orange County to fund a very important new corridor that will provide access, for example, to the convention center. We've got a $1.3 billion investment there. It will provide access to the Rosen Center. It will provide additional access to all the residents and workers that have to traverse either Universal Boulevard, or Sand Lake, or I Drive. So, this is another major facility that will provide access and mobility for that entire area.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Who's next?
RJ Mueller.
RJ.
Okay, RJ.
My name is RJ Mueller, and I live in District 5, just east of UCF on McCullough Road, which runs along the Seminole-Orange County line. I have a lot to say, but I promise to keep it concise in the three minutes.
Thank you.
All right? I did a next-door poll covering 10,000 residents in many communities on the one-cent sales tax. 74% said no, so we've got our work cut out for us. I did another next-door poll on adding Lynx service. I was surprised when only 59% were in favor. I suspect it's because people in our area don't, won't, or can't use buses because of the convenience of cars. So, cars are really the focus of my conversation here. As much as we would like everyone to use multimodal transportation, it's not reality. And if you want to win the hearts and minds of the people in east Orange County, it might be a good idea not to focus so much on Sun Rail and Lynx, but to focus on road improvements that move cars. Let me use McCullough Road as an example. It's already been talked about, because it's near and dear to my heart. I live there. Most think it's a sleepy road in east Orange County and don't know it is one of the only two major thoroughfares, east-west from the Lake Pickett area to the UCF area. Highway 50 is the other. That two-lane road carries 24,000 cars a day, well above its intended capacity. We're averaging two accidents a month on that one-mile stretch of road. More and more, we see animals dead on the road and sidewalks. We need better lighting. The sidewalks are inadequate, and there's no bike lane. For too long, McCullough and my area have been ignored. Thankfully, no humans have died on McCullough, but many are injured by accidents. While there are no human deaths, more and more wildlife are found dead on the road. A couple of weeks ago, I went for my daily walk and found a dead buck, a dead armadillo, and a young fawn that still had its spots, all killed the night before on that half-mile, two-lane dark stretch of roadway. Seeing that dead fawn that I just saw a few days earlier, frolicking with its sister at its mother's side, was just too much, and is what prompted another poll. 71% of people polled want the speed limit dropped from 45 to 35 on that two-lane stretch of McCullough, as well as better lighting. What else can we do to fix this? One obvious fix is the Richard Cruddy to North Tanner. That one-mile stretch of road, that would cost less than $10 million, would provide another eastward roadway and cut the traffic on McCullough, as well as Highway 50, and provide a south entrance to UCF from the east. Another idea is to resurrect a regional transportation study paid with invest dollars that was supposed to be completed in December of 2017, but was never started because of the Lake Pickett lawsuit. Start that now, so you have a blueprint on what needs to be done if this tax passes. You know, I'm a multimodal advocate, and better Lynx service would be nice, but I hate to say it, our area would benefit more from road improvements that move cars. I'm at three minutes, so I'm going to close.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to commend Christine Lotheley and her staff for quickly installing wildlife crossing signs on McCullough. Thank you very much. I have so much respect for all the staff at Orange County. Everyone is always courteous and well-intentioned, and words cannot say enough about these people. I also want to say I'm 100% behind the tax, but it has to work for us in east Orange County. Mayor, I commend you for the courage to take this on, as it's a long time coming and the only way to solve our transportation problems. Thank you very much for listening.
Do people agree with RJ? Please let us know. Thank you. Thank you, RJ. You're a wealth of information. We're going to have to get with you and get some of those results. Mayor?
I would respond to RJ by saying thank you for being here. What we've tried to do is be clear to you tonight that there are multiple things that can be accomplished with the dollars if this sales tax does pass. It is all about moving people. In some ways, it's about getting people out of cars as opposed to keeping people in cars, because that isn't sustainable long-term. One of the, I think, benefits of getting people out of cars is we reduce our carbon footprint if we look at alternative modes of transportation. But what we're trying to do is just give you a sliver of what it could be. Certainly, we would be improving roadways, widening roadways, dealing with connector roads, et cetera, here within our community, and that's why we're working really with the And that's why we're working really with the municipalities. Orange County really is the hub of this entire region. It would be very difficult for us to really improve the overall regional transportation system if Orange County doesn't have and lead the way and have the majority of, I think, the connectivity that is going to be required. So just stand by. You know, I think we will be able to address all of those issues that you talked about. And Commissioner?
Commissioner Bonilla?
Bonilla?
Let's get you a microphone.
I think it's on.
So since I've gotten into office, I've been working on the Richard Carrity Parkway. I'm now at the point where UCF will be, or may, because I have to talk to the decision-makers because they do have a board that they have to vote on it. But they have been wanting to donate some of the land for the Richard Carrity Parkway, so I got that far. The research park, they also know it's coming and they're favorable to it. And I'm also willing to put in some of the district dollars towards that road as a public private partnership, since it would be, since UCF would be donating some land. So this is my first opportunity to speak to the mayor about it or have him in the same room, since this is a transportation meeting. So I really hope to get his support on that. Yes, I'm putting him on the spot here.
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
Jane, we have John.
John?
I'm John Puhack. And I have rental property. I have all kinds of people that rent from me. Not that many units, but a lot of them are service workers that take care of our elderly, caretakers, people that work in the tourist industry. They make $10 to $15 an hour. And every dollar is critical to these people with the cost of living. And they can't all afford cars. I'm from the Sierra Club and we believe in improving the transit system. Links has not ever had a stable funding source. They've had big money every 30-some years. I've lived in central Florida. They should have expanded, as the mayor says. They haven't expanded. I believe we need to have a stable funding source for Links, Sun Rail, and expand it. I mean, to have lines run once an hour, I mean, half of them, that's ridiculous. Can you imagine missing a line, having to go to work at Disney and have to say, "Well, hey, I had to change my baby and I missed my bus and I'm an hour late"? Well, that might not fly.
Thank you. Mayor?
Since we have the chief operating officer here from Links, I thought we would get her in to kind of respond. You know, you heard kind of what his concern was.
Well, he said everything that, you know, we've been saying for the last 30 years. So you're right, we do need to expand our buses. We do need to increase the frequency. And we have, for the last 30 years, been going every year to our funding partners. And so those are... You made my point for me.
Tiffany, could you talk about Pittsburgh, a similar-sized city?
Yes, thank you, Jane. Similar-sized area, Pittsburgh has over 700 buses. And just kind of inside baseball, when we've done our plans and long-range planning for Sun Rail, Links probably should have been at about 375 buses when Sun Rail opened and we're still at just a little over 300. So just some of those nuggets of information. So, thank you.
And I have traveled to Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, a number of leaders from the private sector and the public sector. Went to Pittsburgh to look at a number of things there, but one of the things we looked at was the transportation system. We, just in Orange County alone, we're about 1,000 square miles. Allegheny County is about 700 square miles. They have somewhere around 1.1, 1.2 million people. So we have a slightly larger population, but yet they have twice the number of buses there within their jurisdiction. And so the wait time for the buses is less and the connectivity is greater. And those workers who depend on public transit, they're able to get back and forth between work and other places more efficiently than we do here. And so while we're not making it all about Links, what happens when we have a dedicated funding source? It really relieves the pressure on the remainder of the budget that we have for the county. If we have funding dedicated for transportation to do these types of expansion projects that we talked about, then we can use the money that's freed up in our general fund to address other issues like social issues related to homelessness, maybe healthcare, maybe housing. We have a housing challenge. We have 110,000 households that are chronically rent-stressed in our community, where they are paying more than 30% of their total household income for rent payments. With this tax, if we can lower the transportation costs for that family, it frees up more money for them to be able to afford to pay higher rent or other things that is necessary to live a quality life here in our community. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, Jeff, who's next?
Thank you.
Gloria. Gloria, you look like you've... Have you lived here a long time?
Yes, I have.
How many years?
I've been in central Florida 42 years.
Wow.
Resident of Maitland.
Go ahead.
And I'm Gloria Picar and I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters in Orange County. And we're a very large organization comprised of men and women. We study issues, we educate the public about them, and then we take positions on them. And transportation is one of our highest priority issues. So I want all of you here to know that we are watching very carefully what we're trying to accomplish here in Orange County. We did a study last year at the end of the year, toward the end of the year, just before Mayor Demings was elected, a transportation report card. And this is the report card. And we gave our metro area a grade of D. We gave it a rate of D in every category that we looked at. Number one on our list was the highest fatality rate in the country. The most dangerous road in the country is Interstate 4 in the United States, number one ranked in 2016. The answer to that fatality rate and to citizen safety on our roads is not more roads. It's not just adding more lanes and more lanes and more lanes. It's helping to get some of our cars off those lanes and onto transit. Transit in many communities has a very positive reputation. Here in central Florida, it doesn't seem to have that, but we need to work hard to make that happen. Another reason is because of the pedestrian and cyclist fatalities. We're currently number three in the United States. We've been the worst. Now we're the third worst. So we need to do something about that, obviously, also. We need to take care of our pedestrians. The affordability index is important, housing and transportation, what people are spending on that. The national average is 45%. We're spending 53% of our family's income on that.
So you're saying people that take public transit are spending a great deal more money than they should?
Great deal more money. And as the gentleman prior to me and the business owner said, our families can't afford that. You know, they need to be able to get to and from work. And so one of the... We had nine recommendations that came out of our report. The top two, interestingly enough, before we ever heard Mayor Demings' recommendations. The number-one recommendation was community forums, just like this. So I commend the mayor, we commend the area, we commend Central Florida, Orange County, for doing this. This is exactly what we need to do.
Gloria, could...
The second one...
Sorry, please go ahead.
The second one was a dedicated funding source, and we said it is a tax base, increasing our tax base. Increasing a penny would be fabulous. So I want to applaud what's happening here today. We're watching, we're taking notes, we're going to keep doing this, and we're going to do another report card. And I'm very hopeful that our report card is going to be on a much higher plane. So thank you.
Is there a website that people can go to to read your report card?
Certainly. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. So go to LWVOC for League of Women Voters, Orange County, LWVOC.org. And you can read the report. It's posted right on the front page. You can also join there. Men and women can belong. Please, help us to help you make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to remind you that with the sales tax, 50% or so of the people who will be paying it don't live here.
All right, we have a new microphone and a new speaker.
We have a new microphone and we have a long line.
I know.
We're going to urge our speakers to try and be as pithy as possible.
Yes.
Okay? And what is his name again?
Lisa.
Lisa.
Yes, my name is Lisa. I worked at Disney for 22 years. When I first started at Disney, I started in '97, but in '99, I lived on the west side. I live in District 5 now. I live off of Alafera. I had to walk... Links is awful. Disney got a bus that run to 10 o'clock, but when you get downtown on a Sunday, there's no buses after 6 o'clock. I had to walk from downtown to Raleigh Street to my children because I didn't have any other way to get home. It's very dangerous to have to do that, and Links is awful. I've been here since 1983 and it is horrible. You either get to work two hours early or two hours late. There is no in-between. Secondly, if you go up on... If you raise the taxes, I can't go shopping now. Do you know there's no places that has layaway plans anymore? That's optional. So the only way I would be able to afford to go shopping is a layaway plan because raising the taxes... But it's a rumor going around that you're going to give Universal $125 million. How about take that $125 million and put it in Links? Because it is awful and people need to be able to get to work.
Well, we thank you for that. And you want... But if Links got more buses, would that be a solution for you, aside from the $125 million?
I feel the buses should be 24 hours. They should not be stopping at 6 o'clock on Sunday.
They're going to write that down. 24-hour buses. Thank you so much. And could we... You touched on something with Links and running the 24... I'll think of that in a minute. But you touched on something that I think we can address, so thank you for your comments.
Jane, we have Tom. Is it Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. I have a problem with the 1% quite frankly, because what we've been talking about here is two transit systems, Sun Rail and Links. They're both operating at present with about a $60 million deficit amongst both of them, which will come out of our pocket, no matter how you look at it. We always got to stay conscious of one fact. Whenever we're talking about money, we're talking about these people's money. These people work some two, three jobs. So we got to stay conscious of that all the time. So I'm troubled that we're sitting here talking about expanding this, expanding that. One thing I haven't heard here tonight at all is how are we going to make Links and Sun Rail cost-effective? Because all we're doing is throwing good money after bad money. Links has been around a long time and they've been operating on deficits, dipping into their reserves. It's reported they got a $21 million deficit. Now, where do you think that's going to come from? I don't have a printing machine that makes money and neither do any of these people. You got to stay conscious of that fact. And another thing, especially with Mr. Demings, Mayor Demings, you've been talking about this a lot. A lot of people are coming to Orange County. That's more of a good thing for you than a bad thing. Forbes Magazine recently reported, "Orange County, Florida, in the year 2018, had 84,000 permits come into their office at a value of $2.3 billion." So I got to ask you, show me the money. Where is it? Because that money's supposed to go for transportation, impact fees, property taxes. If we had 84,000 permits come in last year, why are we talking about an increase in sales tax now for transportation when we had that benefit of all those people coming to Florida?
Well, we will answer that. Thank you.
You have multiple issues there, but let me just kind of address some of them. If you look at any mass transit system in America, you can go to New York City, you may not be aware that the majority of transportation system, public transit systems in the country, don't pay for themselves from ridership. From what people who pay the fares to get on, ridership is never the majority of the money. Most of them get the majority of their money from some other funding source, from the federal government, from the state, et cetera. I'll let the Links representative tell you a little bit about that in terms of deficit. You mentioned that they're running a $21 million deficit. That's really not true. Sometimes, and I'll let them kind of tell... No? Are you responding? Okay. Would either one of you want to respond to the question about the fiscal house for Links itself and kind of share some facts with them about that?
Well, public transit in general has never been designed to pay for itself. It's not a private entity. So it is a public service. Roads don't pay for themselves. So you have to maintain them. So, and I think our fiscal house is in order right now. I think we are as efficient as we can be with the money we have. I think we're good stewards of it. Our costs have gone up. We have a growing population. We have an aging population. So I think we are... We have the paratransit. If you look at our numbers compared to across the country and...
I have looked at it.
Across the country, we are operating very efficiently.
And may I touch on one more thing that you brought up and Lisa brought up? This tax won't be on everything. Could we talk about, you know, it will not be on prescription drugs. Can we just have a brief tutorial for our audience to know that if this tax would pass, what would be taxed and what would not?
Okay, so let's look to our panel of experts over there. The tax isn't...
Call it.
There's no tax on groceries. Call it if you want to kind of respond to that.
Yeah, I was just going to touch on some expenditures that we customarily think about. And in the case of this sales tax, as the mayor mentioned, it would not be applicable to your essential grocery items. So those are the things like bread that are essential to our well-being, not necessarily some of the junk food things that we may buy. It also is not applicable to your utilities. So when you pay your utility bill, you would not be paying a sales tax on that. It is...
Prescription, prescription drugs.
It's not applicable to your prescription drug expenses. So those are some things that I know people have regularly consumed and are concerned about. Those are things that are not taxable.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Jane, we have Micah. Micah.
Hi, Micah.
Hello. My name is Micah Bass. I've lived in Orange County since the early '70s. So approximately 40 years. I'm a climate guy, so recently I bought an electric vehicle, which I park at Orange County Building almost every day, to a great rate. And speaking of Pittsburgh and the buses, I think Pennsylvania bus line or city transit transformed into electric vehicles and the savings would be an anomaly of good money rather than bad. So being here, and we tried this in 2003 and I think in '82, the lobbyists and the other people stood in the way, maybe a little... Things happened there. And so what I'm asking is Links and the county commissioner, we collect, what, $25,000 per permit, per home for impact fees for a new construction home. I'm all for public transportation. I travel the world extensively. I can get on my backpack and get off the plane and go anywhere in the city, most cities, but not Orange County. You know me as well, Mayor and Commissioner. I own hotels on International Drive. And the first thing out of my customers' mouth is, "How do we get around?" So with that being said, I'm hoping that the tax is more a luxury tax, cigarettes, alcohol, and things like that, rather than the consumables of medicine and things that our taxpayers are suffering from. So I would hope that this would be a green electric move with electric trains, maybe. I've ridden trains all around the world and 20, 30 years ago, in New York, they have electric trains. So it's kind of maybe a little bit more of an environmental push for the county commissioners and the taxpayers. I think yesterday, our other mayor, our city mayor, agreed to electric scooters. So it's what we need and I think it's long overdue. So there's no question. I just hope that you would think a little more green.
So your solution would be green?
Money savings is anomaly. Pittsburgh or one of the cities I read about the other day, they replaced 30 buses and their savings was, we'll get the other 30 buses real shortly with the savings in fuel. So I personally have an electric vehicle, which I park there. My fuel bill, and I spent 25 years driving through Orange County, house to house, as a consumer advocate, fighting insurance companies for homeowners that had storm damage. So with that being said, that 25 years of going through these neighborhoods and all these different places, the growth is just outrageous. So my savings went from... My fuel bill went from $1,700 a month to $200 for electric. It would pay for itself.
Okay, just a few comments. Well, we'll let our team of experts respond first, but while he's coming forward, what I would tell you is that we do have a housing for all task force and they should be finishing be finishing up their work the first week in November with some recommendations. You will likely see some, um, recommendation to the Board of County Commission to streamline our permitting processes so that we can get, uh, more housing, uh, starts and more, uh, construction projects underway so that we can deal with the deficit of, uh, available, affordable housing units in our community. If we simply raise the impact fees, those fees will likely get passed on to, uh, the consumer who is already chronically rent-stressed. So we're looking at all of the options that we have. You'll hear much more about it. We're looking at some of the green initiatives. You mentioned, uh, electric vehicles. Yes, uh, electric vehicles is good, but if we got every person out of a gasoline-powered automobile and simply put them into an electric automobile, uh, and that's not a, um, uh, a- a vehicle that can, uh, transport multiple people, you know, twenty, thirty, forty sizable people, we still haven't really moved the needle in terms of reducing congestion. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Expert.
Hello, I'm John Slott, also with Lynx, Chief Innovation Sustainability Officer for the agency. So green is where I focus too. Um, and just a couple of good news items here. We've also seen this. So as an agency, um, on that three-hundred-plus buses, um, roughly, right now, about seventy of those buses are CNG or low-emission vehicles and we're purchasing exclusively the CNG-model vehicles. So as you see us, replace our vehicle fleet, we're doing the CNG for the lower, low version.
That's compressed natural gas, by the way.
Yeah, sorry. Compressed natural gas, everybody. Um, the other side of that is electric vehicles. We just, um, uh, won some grants with our federal government, uh, to replace, uh, half of our limo line with electric vehicles in the downtown corridor. That'll give us a chance to learn how to operate electric vehicles in our- in our fleet. Um, and to the point for everybody, that's roughly about a hundred thousand gallons of diesel fuel we won't burn. Uh, so in- in a year, just for those seven buses. So multiply that by three hundred buses, you'll see where that's going. So that's the intention. We're- we're trying to move that green needle.
Thank you, Micah. We have a question, uh, from- from the, um, audience, um, from, uh, Mr. Khalil. He wants to talk about traffic congestion at Goldenrod Road, uh, Lake Underhill and Highway Fifty Colonial. What's the future plan to fix that? Now, we know that that's, some of that is a state road, but we know that that is a problem area. Can someone address the traffic congestion and can you write that down to make sure that's part of our plan?
More Renzo. Come on, Renzo.
Thank you. So, uh, as Jane mentioned, um, State Road Fifty and Goldenrod are both state roads. But I think, uh, as we hear your- your comments and your issues, whether it's a state road or county road, that's precisely the type of comments that we want to hear because I, and again, I don't wanna speak out of term, but- but I think there's- there's a possibility, there's a chance that we can also partner with the state to address some of the deficiencies on their system. As to Lake Underhill, that is actually a perfect example of some of the challenges that the county has had to encounter over the- over the years. Very quickly, the impact fees have been, um, questioned or, uh, the question in terms of development fees came up. So you heard Carla Bell Johnson earlier talk about impact fees and what one mile of roadway would cost, over twelve billion dollars. Current collection, just on the transportation impact fee. So impact fees cover police and fire, uh, transportation, et cetera. Impact fees, we collect a little bit over ten million dollars a year. That's the projected. So you can imagine that based just on- on impact fees, we are way behind the curve in terms of the ability to meet all of the demands throughout Orange County.
Okay.
Thank you, Renzo.
Next.
So we've got a long line here, Jane, and we were trying to get out of here, I think at eight fifteen was our goal. So we're gonna try and make sure everybody, please try and be as brief as possible. You have Sally.
Yes, Sally, please, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Sally Baptist. I was born and raised here in Orange County and I've been here over fifty years, but I won't go any further than that. Everybody can just guess. Uh, the issue of, um, uh, transportation is ma- is massive. We need major reform and cleanup of transportation. I don't think anybody would possibly agree, disagree with that statement. And that, and I was at the Monday meeting that was talking about the Lake Underhill thing, where right now, emergency vehicles can't even get through there. Uh, but the- the whole point is, before you can figure out, uh, how to fix this, you- you have to understand your root cause to the problem. And as I have said many times, it's not a matter of growth, it's a matter of reckless growth management. If you don't get growth under control, you will never control transportation. The two go hand in hand. We need an effective mass transit system, but as I've been look- studying this stuff for over twenty years, probably closer to twenty-five years now, we have seen, Orange County does not know how to manage growth and it does not know how to manage the transportation. They go hand in hand. And anybody here who would like to have an in-depth discussion about growth and transportation, I could easily give an eight-hour, a one-day seminar to teach people about it, 'cause I've been studying this. And the bottom line on all this, you don't need more money, you need proper growth management, you need people who understand how to develop a system. And you don't be, need to be given our money to mega corporations like Universal. Universal is getting a hundred and forty-one million dollars. How can you tell me you can give them money and then tell me you don't have money for the roads? I'm sorry, I do not, I, that- that is just not acceptable.
But Sally, that's a little off-topic because the money is going to build a road that citizens will drive on. So it's not giving money to Universal, it's helping the Kirkman Road Corridor for citizens to drive on.
It is giving, it is, it is giving it to Universal. That's exactly what the- the plan is to do it. So to go and say that it's not giving a hundred and forty-one million dollars to Universal is being disingenuous. It's the, they can afford to build their own park and- and get people to it. If they can't get people to it, they don't really need the park.
And do you wanna talk to one of, do you wanna talk to one of our experts? Because we have people behind you that we need to get to.
That's correct. I haven't taken my three minutes yet. I don't think I've even gotten through two minutes. Come on, don't be cutting my time now.
I'm giving you three minutes.
I try to talk as fast as I can.
I know you are. I know you are.
The other part of this, and I hear all the time about affordable housing, the reckless growth management is messing up affordable housing and those are the people who need mass transit more than anyone else. So your whole plan, you gotta get it all together. You haven't, you- you haven't connected the dots and it's not, personally, Mayor Demings, it's not you. You just started before you came here and I'm hoping you're gonna do something different to fix it. If you're gonna continue with the status quo, we're just gonna end up in another mess like we are right now in another five to ten years. The problem will only get worse and I'll be paying more and more for it. I shouldn't have to keep paying for reckless growth and if we had good management, we wouldn't be in this mess. Sorry, that's the bottom line. No to the sales tax increase.
Thank you, Sally.
What- what I would tell all of you is that the challenges that we're experiencing aren't unique to Orange County, first off. The entire state of Florida is experiencing this phenomenal growth as well. Florida is now the third-largest state in the union. We surpassed the state of New York. We are only third now behind California and Texas. In terms of the challenges that we have with housing, that's a nationwide issue. Uh, America is growing now with over three-hundred-and-twenty million Americans here and, uh, so this is a, this is not indicative of just Orange County. That's what the point I'm trying to make here. And yes, uh, we can point fingers at, uh, the growth management here, but the fact of the matter is, we have the challenges now and I'm looking for solutions to try to deal with the challenges. If we do nothing, if we do nothing, this is only gonna get worse. And I'm not the kind of leader to just kick the can down the road and not do anything. Yes, we have tried various ballot initiatives before. We tried one in nineteen ninety-seven and we coupled that one with transportation and schools. It failed. We tried one in two thousand and three, it failed. But other metropolitan communities around Florida have already passed the taxes, uh, uh, transportation taxes. In fact, right here in our own metro area, Seminole County has one, Osceola County has one, Lake County has one. Orange County, as Carla went over with you earlier, we have the lowest, uh, sales tax rate here within the area. So even if we increase, uh, at- at six and a half now, if we increase to four penny and we go to seven and a half, Osceola is already at seven and a half percent today. They just put a, an initiative on the ballot in, uh, May of this year, just a few months ago, and it failed because they really didn't get community input. The people in Osceola didn't see themselves in the narrative of their story. But I want you to see yourselves in the narrative of this story about the potential that this, what this community can become. And if you all want us, we all will pay. Someone said here a few minutes ago, "We're talking about their money." No, 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 we're talking about our money. I'm not immune from this. Uh, I'll pay significantly in terms of taxes here in this county. And so we all have to, uh, put in for this in order for it to be a success. And, yes, sir.
And you've been very patient, sir.
Landon, hang on with Jane, real quick. There's a young lady in the back in the red. Raise your hand, ma'am, in the back in the red. In the line, in the line. That's the last person we're gonna take, so please don't get behind the person in the red because we've gotta get out of here at some point tonight, all right? She's the la- you're the last one. We're gonna get you, but you're the last one. Everyone in line, we've gotta give about one minute so we can get moving, all right? Landon?
Uh, in addition to the sales tax increase, would you also consider an increase in property tax that only applies to, uh, large hotels, hospitality structures, themed entertainment structures, so that the corporations that take in massive amounts of money in our community can also pay?
The answer is no. Uh, not, not this mayor. I'm not interested in increasing property taxes. Let me tell you why. Real estate values here in Orange County are going up. And so even, even if, uh, if you live, if your, your home is homesteaded, it can't go up in a year by more than three percent. Uh, and then with businesses and- and in some regards, it's capped there as well. But because overall values, you all got your, uh, real estate notices recently from, uh, the Orange County Tax Collector, uh, uh, Property Appraiser, and, uh, you know that here, uh, real estate values are, again, about a double-digit, nine, ten percent growth in the last year. And so because of that, uh, our business owners, small businesses, uh, individual property owners are, are actually gonna be paying more taxes. So I'm not looking to, uh, put a double whammy on the people here in Orange County. Uh, and again, if we looked at that solution, it would cut out the opportunity to get revenue from that fifty-one percent of the people who don't live here.
In addition to the sales tax.
In addition to, oh, wow. No, the- the, the answer would be no. I- I'm not going to be the champion for- for that at- at this time.
Thank you so much, sir. Your name, sir?
Oh, sorry. No problem. Um, hello, I'm Tyron, uh, my name is Tyron Schaefer. I'm a data analyst working at Electronic Arts. And some of the things that I wanted to discuss about, because like, for example, I'm trying to represent like the younger crowd who can't show up. I have a couple of friends that were not able to attend this meeting because there is no transit between UCF to here. So for me, this is a really big button issue. One of the, couple of the things that I wanted to suggest to help improve transit, um, being solution-focused, right?
Yes.
We're really big on that in technology, is one, uh, ramp metering, that'll help like with, uh, on-ramp metering, so that helps like prevent all the crashes and merging, 'cause merging is like the big issue, the big reason why, um, I- for traffic and stuff like that is terrible. Um, two is, um, open traffics, open the sensor data for traffic. It helps people like me who are enthusiastic technologists to look through like all the data provided by the city government and provide possible solutions and optimizations, um, using computers, right? And since it's civilian-led, it's free for you guys. I care enough to do that, you know? So aside from that too, um, the other big issues with everyone that- that's kinda going on is that, the- the reason why transit sucks in Orange County is because of the fact that like our city is not appropriately dense enough. We don't have an, like, the, there's a study published in nineteen seventy-seven that suggested that in order to have efficient transit, you had to have about forty-two-hundred people per square feet, square mile in an area. Orange County is primarily zoned as low-density housing or low-density commercial. Giant stores with huge parking lots that no one ever wants to walk to, you know? Why would I ever walk to a bus stop if I have to walk half a mile to get to it through empty hellscape parking lots in, well, in East Colonial? The, the reason why transit doesn't work is not because there isn't enough roads, it isn't because there, like, part of it is due to funding, but it's because our city itself is designed in such a way that is conducive for cars and not humans. If we can build places that are walkable, build places that are closer, like closer together and actually have, um, stuff like that, then we can see reasonable improvement.
Excellent.
Thank you, Tyron.
Thank you so much.
Solution-based.
They were writing down a lot of stuff over there.
In our community, we've had, we've had the wonderful blessing of having land and that's why, you know, the character of our community has been one that it's, it's kinda spread out. But many of the projects that you see now that are being planned, uh, do take into consideration density. So we're looking at land use. Uh, I mentioned, uh, the Housing for All Task Force and some of its recommendations will be, uh, about comprehensive planning and, uh, looking at current land use, uh, regulations that we as a Board of County Commission, uh, get to, uh, put in place. And so you'll see some improvement coming that way. And we are seeing a different demographic now that wants high density, wants to live more in that urban, kinda downtown kind of environment. And we, the key will be, if we build those types of communities around Orange County, is to connect them. Again, it- it just cries out for a, a well-connected transit system. Okay, thank you.
All right.
This is Ron. Jane?
Hi, Ron.
Hi, Jane. Uh, first of all, Mayor and Commissioner, thank you for having this meeting.
Yes, sir.
It really shows, uh, sincere intent to not dictate from the top down. Uh, I think all the ideas about the connector lines and, and especially Lynx makes sense, but it's gonna be, take a long time. You're gonna have to have high-density zoning. In the meantime, while we're going towards, that's a twenty-year goal, I would guess, to get a real sophisticated Lynx overlay over what's pretty low-density housing. In the meantime, especially on the east side, we really don't have enough east-west transport. Uh, we've got fifty and we've got McCullough. And so I'm glad to hear, Commissioner, that you've made some progress on the Riordan Parkway. I do think that of all the little pots of money that you could spend, you'd have the biggest bang for the buck putting through that Riordan Parkway or something like that so that the east-west traffic can flow heavily. You've got UCF, you've got this grow going in, you've got University, there's a retirement property going in. That, all that whole eastern corner, uh, is gonna provide more and more traffic and I'm hoping you'll make plans to stay ahead of it.
Thank you so much.
All right. Great thinking, Ron. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Um... Hello? Okay. Yeah, so, um, again, if you heard someone about the Richard Carrady Parkway, which is really important to me to get through because there's over seven thousand more jobs that can be opening in Research Park and they can't attract more businesses or jobs without getting the congestion in that area under control. So that's a great job center and opportunity for people in the area to go to work. And proper growth management is about having those job centers and like someone said, the density closes job centers so that you can have a good mass transit system. And I'm, I am gonna be having some computed, community planned, community meetings in my district, which I hope all of you can go to. Well, you can email my office, districtfive@ocfl.net. We'll put you on our mailing list so that when those come up, you know about it, so that what we're gonna be doing is talking to the community about how they wanna see their communities, develop the future vision of your communities and preserving some of that, that you love about your communities as well. And that's something too, that I would like to get the mayor on board with me and we're gonna be having a meeting, me and him, soon about that as well. Thank you.
Jane, we have Marge and she's promising to be brief. Everyone else is gonna make the same promise, I guarantee you that.
Thank you, Marge.
Marge?
Yes, hi there. Marge Holt, and I represent the Sierra Club Central Florida Group, Conservation Chair. I would like to reiterate that the Sierra Club supports mass transit. We believe there is a positive attribute about co-locating these transportation corridors in existing, uh, roadways and, you know, transportation alignments and that's a real advantage. Part of the advantage is directing that transportation into the urban service area and protecting our rural service area and our wildlife corridors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marge.
Thank you, Marge. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Good comments.
We have, we have Charles, Jane.
Okay, Charles?
Charles Osborne, the Mercy Response Team. This is Tiffany.
This is Tiffany. Is the 3% for advertising correct? Adverti-
Oh, are you talking about links?
Yes.
And links is advertising that's on the bus?
Advertising should be at least 50 to 75%. In other words, all your advertisements in the bus should be focused on the maintenance of the bus. Then you have corporate sponsors, have them pay for the bus. That's how you do it. You need your corporate sponsors in your advertising, because that is reckless if you don't have at least 50 or 75% for advertising. Because I know people in WMTA, Washington Metropolitan Traffic Authority, I lived in DC for over 10 years, I know the WMTA, their advertising is spot-on. They don't need all this federal money, all the county money, or even the state money. They could basically survive itself on the advertising. So you need marketing, big time, because without marketing, like, take for instance, ERT has been around for 25, have been around for almost 25 years now. Team Rubicon came in 10 years ago, what did they have? Marketing. What do we have? Nothing, we all do marketing, because we believe in all volunteerism. But without marketing, nobody knows about you. And links, you need to get the marketing, that way you can bring in more links buses, and that way you can cover not only just Osceola, Seminole, and Orange County, but you also can cover Polk and A County, the five, the five counties which are here in central Florida. And for Mayor Demings, if you wanna know more about transportation, we have an, we have an Electronic Arts guy, he can tell you all about simulations called SENS4 in SimCity.
Thank you, Charles.
It's not your transportation system stopped, because the guy from there is a public Electronic Arts, he can make a simulation, 'cause I love the simulation summit.
Thank you, Charles. And we wanna make sure that we write that down, that Charles' solution, that he believes there should be more advertising dollars for links, and we've got that written down, and that perhaps with more advertising dollars, more people will ride links, okay?
Jane, we have Andrew, is Andrew correct?
Hi, Andrew.
Hi, I live in West Orange County, and we've seen a lot of developing in the past decade. And my question is, I notice subdivisions that are being built very quickly within a year, and the existing infrastructure, the roads, the side roads, are not being upgraded to handle that increase of traffic. You have 300 two-car garages come in, and that's 600 more cars on a small road. And I'm just wondering, why is it that these subdivisions are being allowed to develop without the infrastructure at least being planned to upgrade?
So your solution would be to create the infrastructure before we allow-
Yes, to have the infrastructure designed to handle future upgrades. And also I see that a lot of areas, a lot of areas with massive amount of trees are completely being torn down to build a lot of these subdivisions. And from what I heard, it's because the county is wanting to make money off of the land, to be able to tax the land. And I'm just wondering, at what point does the county have any development restrictions and development control to keep developers from coming in and overdeveloping our area? This is why we're having pedestrian accidents, bicycle accidents, animals getting ran over because they're getting forced out of their habitat. So I'm just wondering, I understand there's growth, I'm all about growth, but I feel like there needs to be a balance.
Noted your points. Can somebody talk about that? We're gonna have somebody to address your concern. We need a microphone? There we go.
So there was a lot of questions, Chris Testerman with the county administration. So let me touch on the tree, the tree issue. So we do have a tree protection ordinance. So the way it works is, as projects come in, you cannot, you cannot take out a certain number of trees, and if you do take out the trees, you have to pay basically a fee that goes into a tree fund. So we do not, it's really a tree protection policy. Now, understand, when subdivisions come in, they do have to take out trees because of the way the drainage works, but they have to replant a certain number of trees. So I think I just wanted to respond to that. In terms of the infrastructure, the way it works is, we do have minimum standards, so like a new subdivision has to have access to an existing county road. The purpose of impact fees is to basically pay for some of that additional infrastructure that development may impact, but we hear what you're saying in terms of making sure that the surrounding area is not overly impacted by development. But we do have some regulations, and we'll continue to improve those regulations to deal with that issue.
Thank you, very good points, thank you so much. Okay.
Jane, I have David.
Hey, David.
Yes. David Bottomley, I had been a resident of Orange County before Disney got here, hailing from the wonderful state of Rhode Island and Providence plantations. Remember Roger Williams kicked us out of there, and we were both over it, especially when the pants are playing. My point is this, I understand that the impact fee level was reduced in 2008, and has, is at the 56% level now. Give me another mic. And it's slowly creeping up. My suggestion is this, before you have a sales tax initiative, bring those impact fees up to at least 100% to where they were 2008 or earlier, to fund these transportation projects, so the people that are sitting to my right, who I know most, some of them, can do their job, putting lights in, streets in, F-level, F-level streets, there's a bunch of them out there, 'cause I understand the impact fee goes into one pot. Now, as for affordable housing, look at your impact fee distribution, money distribution, and redo it. When you do all this, then come to me and talk about sales tax increase, otherwise I am not in support of the sales tax until this, until these parameters are made. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Alright, David, good comments. You know, we are looking at the, all of the impact fee structures and housing, et cetera. And again, I'm gonna remind you that that particular model is probably insufficient to be able to do what we are trying to do here in terms of being transformative, because that puts the burden totally just on Orange County taxpayers.
With over 1,000 people coming to Florida, I mean, I think they can afford the impact there, 'cause we're in that market to sell. So I mean, that's why I say at least 100%.
I wish it was that, that simple. You know, the reason why we have the housing crisis that we have is people can't afford the price points that we currently have.
Thank you, David.
And we could inadvertently drive up our homeless population by doing so. If people can't afford to live in quality housing, they end up on our streets. And that creates more of a burden on us, on our drone fund, to provide social services and the like for that. So we're looking at it holistically.
Mayor Renzo, would I can make a quick comment as well?
Renzo?
Very quick comment back on the impact fee issue, keeps kind of up. So our fees right now are at 56% for transportation, okay? So we collect 56% of what we could actually collect at 100%. So even if we doubled it, so as I said earlier, we're collecting a little bit over $10 million a year. So if it's $20 million, then that means we can build two miles of new roadway as a four-lane section. So the magnitude of the need that we have here is far beyond what impact fees could generate. And in addition, as the mayor said, those costs get passed on to the homeowner by the builder. So they're gonna end up paying more for the house at the end of the day. So it's, you know, impact fees cannot cover it, gas taxes cannot cover it, and we, that's why we have to supplement with other revenues like sales tax and the millage.
Thank you, Doug.
We have to keep moving on though, sorry. Thank you, David, thank you, Renzo. Jane, we have Rich.
Hey, Rich.
Hi. Hi, Jane. In an effort to try to save time, just gonna read what I wrote in regards to a traffic sit, by the way, thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, for this meeting.
Thank you.
But we have a traffic situation in unincorporated Orlando, headed towards north, if you head it north on Econ Trail towards University Boulevard, as you approach, as you approach Lake Douglas Place on the right, and that is just before the overpass that traverses 417. The following problem exists, and I will remind you folks here that about two weeks ago, I saw a car right in front of me get clipped, and I was transferred to FHP. About two months ago, my son tells me, hey dad, I just saw a six-car accident there. So my concern is that there may be a fatality here, if this is not dealt with. Basically, when a vehicle is coming south on Econ Trail and is attempting to make a left turn on Douglas Place, there's a problem there, because the car is behind that vehicle that are supposed to stop, well, guess what? There's a big blind spot there. And the problem is, yes, there is a flashing light there, which is good, but the problem is that light is a little bit too close to Lake Douglas, Lake Douglas Place. So basically, the cars behind the vehicle waiting to make that turn usually slam into that car. That's what happens. And it's getting worse, because like you said, traffic is getting more, and we have more people here. So I'm almost done here. The blind spot, as the vehicle heads south, like I said, is a flashing light. The resolution that I may recommend is add another flashing light, or move that one a little, not so close to the Lake Douglas Place, a little further out, it's a little too close. There's no runway there for them to stop, it's just, you're just gonna crash, I mean, it's-
And that's your traffic solution?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich.
Great, thank you. Diana, Diana, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
It looks like he has it written down, either if he can give it to us, or we can take a cellular phone-
You can respond, Diana?
Picture of what he has there.
Just a quick comment here, we have an intersection improvement that will commence in about two months. We have already selected a contractor, we're working on the contract details right now. Construction should start in two months, and you will see the improvements that you are just asking for very, in a very near future.
Alright, well, there you go.
Thank you, Rich, very timely, very timely. Thank you.
Jane, we have Jeremy.
Okay.
Hi, Mayor, Commissioner, nice to see you. I hope I'll get a yes, just as quickly to my question. I live in Winter Park, I'm a resident of the district. There's no doubt that the link system is in need of expansion, for sure. Hospitality workers have an incredibly difficult time getting to work, you heard people talk about that earlier tonight. A couple other speakers addressed the money that the county's committed to give to Universal Studios, 125 million, and I'm wondering your thoughts on instead of giving Universal that money, using that money to buy over 200 buses, which that money could purchase according to the figures from the link's presentation earlier this evening.
Okay, couple of things, remember they said that the funds, we're not writing a check to Universal, by the way. We're paying for roads, and Orange County is putting tax dollars into that deal, and Universal is putting tax dollars into that deal, because the entire motoring public that is in that area will benefit, not just those who may be going to Universal, but those who support the other businesses there in the area, and the residences there in that whole Kirkman Road quarter are gonna benefit. Orange County had to do something, if, I live out in that area, and so I know that those roads have failed a long time ago. In order to really improve that, we've gotta make an investment in the roadway infrastructure there, and that's really what we're doing. What we have done is endeavor to partner with Universal, for Universal to put some money in, because they wanted to expand in that area, and so their expansion was gonna exacerbate an already terrible problem that we had with traffic congestion in the area. So they have come to the table. We still in negotiations, we still have to finish the contractual agreement with Universal over that overall project, and so I wanted to share that with you. But again, those are some restrictive funds that are coming from individuals who are already been taxed in that area, going back to improve the roadway infrastructure in that area. So the dollars really aren't coming from necessarily from some other area going there, if that was clear to you, what I just said to you.
And if you need to talk to Renzo, you know, there's some experts here that can keep enlightening you and help you out.
Jane, we have Derek.
Okay, Derek?
Hello, I, my name's Derek, I live off of University and Dean here in the district, and I've lived in that area, the UCF area, for about eight years now. The county always suggests ideas that can improve our transit, I've seen them the whole time I've been here, but most of the time, they sit and they die, and they never get funded. That happened with an idea that I saw when I first moved to Orlando, which was to add BRT lanes all the way up and down Colonial, and then in front of Alfeia as well. This would be great for people like me, people that are students, or that live in this area, that work in the attractions, or in the city. But almost 10 years later, the county hasn't decided that's a priority. Now I'm hearing, though, that the county is helping, we've heard a couple times today, is helping Universal build a road between their properties with dedicated bus lines, it sounds like, very much like a BRT system. Today I read that it's gonna cost more than double of what links gets in a year from the county, and it's very expensive for how short of a road it is. I believe it's under two miles, and we just heard, two miles of road is costing about $20 million on average. So I'm wondering why, when we're paying for 125 million dollars for half of a small road, like where's all that money going?
I think we asked, and I think we've gone over this, is there a solution? Do you have a solution that you could share with us?
I mean, not spend 125 million dollars on a small road, that usually costs 20 million dollars. But one second, so why does the county feel that road is more of priority than a BRT system on Colonial, for example?
I think we've, we've really responded to that question in multiple ways already tonight. So we've responded to that question, sir, and all due respect, many, many times tonight.
Jane, we have Ella.
Okay, Ella?
Sure, thank you. Hello, thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, my name is Ella, I live downtown on Livingston here in District 5. I first moved downtown because I wanted to live near the center of things, near a hub, but I found that even living in the hub that is downtown, our transportation and road systems really only work if you're trying to get to a tourism central. I think we, that shows we have a priority problem. And knowing where, how we've struggled with those priorities, and hearing that we have one in four of our road systems failing, that makes me really concerned when I see, there was an article today in the Orlando Sentinel saying that Kirkman Road, which we've talked about, is finally being built, it's more expensive per mile than the I-4 Ultimate Project, that it's finally being built after, I quote, "Universal proposed it," using funds that could be used in other places in that district, there are residential neighborhoods in that area.
Do you have a, do you have a solution, Ella, because we've gone over this, and do you have anything that you could give us as a solution? We're trying to write things down.
Yeah, actually, my question is, will you commit that our tax dollars from here on out won't be reprioritized away from what residents say they need, when a company like Universal says that they have a proposal?
We have multiple priorities in our community, and somehow, some of you make it sound like the fact that Universal is expanding is a bad thing for our community. I don't think so. I think it's really a good thing for our community. It will create jobs at various levels, Universal will pay taxes, just like every other property owner in Orange County, to really, their property taxes will go to benefit all of us. That's the way county government and all governments work, the funds that they pay go into our governmental budget that gets to benefit all of our taxpayers. And so I think it's a bit unfair to suggest that only Universal is going to benefit from the investment that they're making here in this area. It's significant, significant jobs that are coming, they've even committed to pay their workers at well above the minimum wage here. And so we've addressed the whole roadway issue in many different ways tonight. The taxpayers of Orange County, the voters of Orange County, in November of next year, get to make a decision whether they want to stay frozen in time, or they wanna see this community grow and prosper, and go to the next level, and deal with the challenges that we have here. Now, if you don't have the tolerance for it, you will be one of those people who will simply vote no for it. The others will vote yes for it. We are coming up with solutions. We're taking our time going around our county, listening to the citizens of Orange County, who wanna really come up with solutions to the challenges that we have. The monies that we're talking about here, again, not to supplant, not to just keep status quo, but to really improve our community and take us to the next level. I hope you understand that.
Alright, who's next?
Thank you, Ella. Theo Webster.
Okay, Theo.
I'm gonna try to be brief. I appreciate the opportunity to express our concerns around transportation to you tonight. I would just say, more buses, running more frequently, running seven days a week, running later in the evening, so people who get off work late in the evening can get home, and more connectivity to Sun Rail, so that my millennial son, who chooses not to drive, can get to his job in Lake Mary without it taking him two to three hours to get there and two to three hours to get home. I also would support better transportation links or Sun Rail, I know we're doing Virgin Trains, but to the airport and to people's homes. I think that's an important piece of it, too.
Thank you, Theo.
Thank you, Theo.
We didn't talk about Virgin Trains, you know, that's a rail that will be coming in, commuter rail from Miami into Orlando, and it will end at the International Airport. And there is a project that may also connect Tampa to Orlando as well. That piece hasn't been formalized at this point, but will, in the future, will there be an opportunity to connect some type of transit system with that system? Probably, but all of that will take money, it will take- But all of that will take money. It will take some public-private partnerships. Virgin Trains is a, is a private entity that is really doing those types of projects all over the world. And they have chosen Florida for a reason because they see the growth potential. They see the business opportunity to make some money from it. And all of this has to make sense in terms of a business plan. So we're looking as a leader in the state of Florida and our nation to be able to benefit from all of the different modes of transportation that's possible out there. Okay.
Jane, we have Carlos.
Carlos, welcome.
Yeah, I'm Carlos. I've been living in Orange County for around 12 years now. I kind of feel like I'm a unicorn here. I'm actually a cyclist commuter. I cycle to work three days a week and I share my single car with my wife. And I would really love to see more bike infrastructure here in, in the county. And, you know, anything that lets us be able to really get active on that would be amazing. Especially here in this area right here, University with so many, you know, with Full Sail and, you know, on the other side of University, the UCF campus. I see so many people riding bicycles on the sidewalks where it's, it's really tiny and it's not always very safe either. One of my ideas, which is I would love to have like a bicycle highway protected, running the entire lane of University. I think, you know, it would invite more people to come out. And it's studies have shown that, you know, more walkers, more cyclists equals more time, more money in the area. And I would hope something like that would also spur more kind of a density in this area. And also make it safer. Like this area right here is probably one of my more dangerous areas. So much so that, you know, it's one of the few areas where I actually do ride on the sidewalk as opposed to on the roadways. And, you know, furthermore, a lot of the roadways say they're, you know, they have the sharrows, the arrows that say they, they share the road. But a lot of those roadways are very badly maintained. There's lots of potholes and I have to be very careful. I've actually, on the intersection of 1792, right by the Enzian, I had a bicycle accident. It wasn't with another car thankfully, but again, it was a pothole. I didn't notice it and I went flying and I had to get, had a tear here and I had to get it repaired. That's the, kind of the state of, of our roadways in general, not just for, you know, a lot of times I'm riding what looks like a side, you know, a bicycle lane, but it's just a shaft shoulder. It's just, I'm always having to look forward to that, you know.
And we have someone right next to you that, that has a solution. If you could stand up and talk to Carlos.
I have to say that I'm really excited to tell you that in this past budget, we got approved some funding for a large multi-use sidewalk from Golden Run to Alfeia Trail along University Boulevard. It's something I've been working towards and that's why I'm just so excited to tell you about it. So this is one of those things that we could say yes to you in this line. Thank you.
Carlos, great suggestions.
Carlos, to complement that, I'm Brian Sanders with the Transportation Planning Division. I'm developing, developing a scope of services to look at pet bike safety on University from 436 to Golden Run. And we'll be partnering with Full Sail. We'll be looking at all of the opportunities that we can enhance that experience for pedestrians and bicycles. So that's going to be coming very, very soon this year.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Carlos. Appreciate that. Jane, this is Kevin.
Hey, Kevin.
Jane, there's two things I'd like to, to say that's very important. One, I want to commend the mayor and I want to commend his staff because this is the first time in over 25 years that they have decided to try and put some money into the roadway system and do a tax so we can build better roads. Too long, Orange County used to just use impact fees from developers to try and develop the roadways. Now they're failing. So this is something that I know a lot of people think that is bad. But after living on this side of Orange County for more than 40 years, the only road I've ever seen done right was Universal, or University Boulevard, where they put all six lanes in before UCF made its big growth. So this is something that I really want to commend the mayor and his staff about because we need that. The only thing that I will ask is don't let somebody add something to that particular fund that will make the voters decide to say no. Because they have a tendency to tack on things that will make it be unpalatable to the voters.
Thank you.
Well, we're getting your input. Remember the surveys that we talked about. So when we fashion this plan, it is going to be based on the input, the collective input that we have received countywide.
All right, our final person of the night.
Last but not least, we have Charity.
Charity, welcome.
Well, my name is Charity. I'm born and raised in Winter Park, Florida. I love the city. But I do have some suggestions about the Lynx bus. I think it should be like all, every Lynx bus, like bus stop should all have a seat for disabled people like me. Especially people who have metal in their leg that can't bend down good to sit on the ground. And it should be stricter rules on buses to help disabled people when you have to get up for someone to let them sit down. Because I couldn't have fell earlier this morning and hurt myself worse because no one would have let me sit down. So it definitely needs to be stricter rules for that. Definitely, and for more stop, seats for the bus stops, definitely.
Thank you.
All right, Charity. That's excellent.
All right.
Thank you. All right. We want to thank you, Mayor. I think you want to say a few words and we're going to thank everybody. Thank you, Cherry, for coming.
Let me just say to all of you, we have growing pains. Some of the things that we talked about tonight really makes it sound like we have a terrible community that we live in. We got a pretty good community. And I can tell you for someone that lived here pre-Disney, I think back to the community that we had before there was a Universal Studios. Many of the qualities of life that we enjoy today, many of us have raised our families because we went to work at the various attractions. We wouldn't be the Orlando, the Orange County that we are today without any of those entities that we've already talked about. And so I want us to always keep things in perspective about what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve our community. That takes the collective of all of us putting our hands to come up with better solutions. Not to just simply gripe about them. We have to be very intentional about it. If we want to change our place, it is going to take new revenue sources in order for us to be able to have the type of paradigm shift that I'm contemplating, that I'm envisioning for our community. You know, for nearly four decades, I was a law enforcement officer in this community. And there were times when I had to make life or death decisions. And I asked the people to trust me when I had to make those decisions. What I'm saying to the people here in Orange County tonight and what I'm going to continue to say to them, trust me that this initiative is going to be good for this community. We're going to make certain that we have the kind of transparency, the type of accountability in this system, in this plan, in this project that decades from now, children who are not yet born, people who will be working in this community at that time will say, thank you. For the people who were the visionaries at that time, who anticipated the need for something before it was needed and they took action in a timely manner. The reason we have some of the challenges we have now, we didn't take action. We failed to take action in a timely manner. I'm not that kind of leader. I'm being bold, working with you and working with our municipalities to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our citizens. Because my family lives here. From my 97-year-old father down to my four-year-old granddaughter, they live in this community. I care about it, just like you do. The staff and all of the people who are here tonight, I believe you would not be here if you didn't care about this community. So thank you regardless of whether you're going to vote for it or not vote for it. Thank you for your input. We have received it and we will continue to have these forums throughout Orange County. We kept you longer than we intended to. God bless.